April 4th, 2023, public hearing of the President and Board of Trustees of Vernon Hills for the review of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. I'll turn it over to Director Lyons for some opening remarks.
Thank you. So this is the public hearing for the fiscal 24 budget. Notice of this hearing was published on the Daily Herald.
I forgot to do the roll call. My apologies. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here.
Okay, now.
Okay. Officially, this is the public hearing of the fiscal 24 proposed budget. The notice of this hearing was budget, was published in the Daily Herald on March 17th. The proposed budget has been posted on the Village website on the homepage for public viewing since February 28th. Further details of the proposed budget were presented publicly to the Committee of the Whole on March 7th and March 21st. The fiscal 24 budget will be considered for final approval at the next Village Board meeting on April 18th. The budget considered for final approval will include revisions presented at the prior Committee of the Whole meetings, as well as changes identified, as well as revise, revisions identified by staff. A memo outlining these revisions and the effect on the bottom line will be provided to the Board prior to final approval. The Village is seeking public comments on the proposed budget at this time.
Should have put Halloween in the budget.
We'll wait on that one. And this is the chance for the public to speak about the budget.
Are there, other opportunities for the public to, is there, is there a formal process to, to send in comments, or is there a particular place?
They can always stop in at the Village Hall, or they can send myself or Director Lyons an email. Our, our contact information is on the Village website.
And they also can appear at the next meeting when the budget is going to be voted upon and speak at that meeting as well.
At that meeting as well.
It won't be a public hearing, but there's an opportunity for public comment. With no comments, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So made.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Hearing's closed.
Okay, President Byrne, if you're ready to begin our Village Board meeting, we're ready when you are, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to call the Village Board meeting in order. Roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here. Would everybody please stand in the bleeder? Please. Okay, is there a motion to appoint Trustee Tom Cook, President Pro Tem?
I would like to nominate Trustee Cook to be Chairman Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
You're second?
Yeah, second. Markwart.
Roll call.
Forster?
Roll call.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next item is citizens wishing to address the Board. Are there any citizens here wishing to address the Board on something that's not on any of our agenda? Okay. The next item would be the appointment of Nate Smith to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Thank you. As you're all aware by now, earlier this year, the Village sought applications from Vernon Hills residents with interest in serving their community on the Village's Planning and Zoning Commission to fill three vacant seats that we had. In total, the Village received four applications. Interviews with the four applicants were conducted by Village staff and Chairman Morris, and each applicant's credentials were shared with President Byrne. After his review and consideration, President Byrne recommended the appointment of Heather Leese, Denise Nabbitt, and Nate Smith to fill these three Planning and Zoning Commission vacancies. Ms. Leese and Ms. Nabbitt's appointments were approved at the March 21st Village Board meeting, and Mr. Smith's appointment is before the Board this evening for final consideration and approval. Mr. Smith is a 12-year resident of Vernon Hills and has a professional background in civil engineering. Mr. Smith currently serves as a Senior Vice President for AECOM Consulting Engineering, and Mr. Smith has also, also previously served the Vernon Hills community as a volunteer with the Vernon Hills Soccer Club. If there are no further questions or discussion, staff is looking for a motion approving the appointment of Nate Smith to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to, motion approve Nate Smith to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Second. We have a motion of second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. And now the swearing in.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Nate Smith?
I, Nate Smith.
Having been appointed to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Having been appointed to the position of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
In the Village of Vernon Hills?
In the Village of Vernon Hills.
In the County of Lake?
In the County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner?
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I mean, it'll be official.
And you may say something if you, or if you wish, you don't have to.
Just thank everybody, look forward to this appointment, and certainly look forward to serving the people of Vernon Hills and the, the Commissioner and everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking the position. Okay. Next item is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. This is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through the 15th, 2023, where as emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical service. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. The safety of our police officers, firefighters, is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the Vernon Hills Police Fire Communications Center. Public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with an emergency service. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunications for the Village of Vernon Hills, Lincolnshire, Libertyville, and Countryside Fire Protection District have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each telecommunicator exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of the Village of Vernon Hills declares the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Vernon Hills in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our village and citizens safe. And that, Chief, you can back me up on this, that cannot be overemphasized. They really are special people, to be able to handle what they handle, because they have to deal with citizens at some of their worst moments in their life.
Yeah, and it's, it's, what, what I always think about is the variety and the, the stress level that they're sometimes facing in, in their role. It, it just, it can go from absolute boredom to sheer madness and insanity in seconds in that room, and it's particularly challenging when their only connection is electronically or telephonically, and they can't reach out and, and touch someone and help them, they can only give them guidance. And it's, it, it's truly an art. We're lucky in Vernon Hills that our, our team of Vernon Hills and Countryside Telecommunicators are the best I've ever seen, and serve as the community, support and play a critical role in, in what the police and fire in this community do. Many times, it's the only service that's needed. Sometimes they're able to solve a person's problem without a police officer or firefighter even responding because the skill of the telecommunicator, they know how to put the person in touch. They really do serve a role of a counselor sometimes and listeners and, but they deal with sheer madness sometimes. So we're lucky to have them. I've said a couple of things consistently my entire career is, I know, I know it's something I couldn't do. The, the level of multitasking that these men and women do, their ability to listen in one ear to the phone call, the radio in the other ear, and then talk to people across the room at the same time they're having a conversation on the, 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 the speaker is just amazing, and, and I'm really proud to, to work with them. So, thank you for the recognition. I will bring this to them and pass it on, and I know they appreciate the community's support. Thank you.
Yeah, their, their service is greatly, greatly appreciated, so. Okay, nobody has a speaking part, correct? So we are on to Omnibus. Right? Okay. Is there a motion, the Omnibus photogen, is there a motion to approve items A through Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished additional business, new business communication. Assistant Manager Petrillo, you wanted to address this.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. Good evening, all. As we enter this season where we may be vulnerable to the impacts of severe weather, we would like to take this opportunity to encourage all residents to sign up for the Village's Emergency Messaging System, formerly known as Blackboard Connect. This system is maintained by the Vernon Hills Police Department and is a great communicu- communications tool for mass notification. The benefits of signing up for this service include, there is no cost. This is a free service provided by the Village. Subscribers will receive emergency messages by voice or text. Messages can be received on one's home, work, and/or mobile phone. Should an emergency occur, such as severe weather, or dangerous conditions such as a gas leak, subscribers will be the first to know. Residents can sign up for this service by going to the Village website, which is vernonhills.org, and in the search bar, enter the keywords Blackboard Connect. The Village tests Blackboard Connect the first Tuesday of March and the first Tuesday of September of each year. The Village will be encouraging residents to sign up for Blackboard Connect on social media, Channel 4, the Village Voice, and website during the month of April. Again, the service is free, and information originates from a trusted source, being the Vernon Hills Police Department. And as a reminder, the Village maintains emergency warning sirens. Locations include Vernon Hills High School, Metra, Oakwood Park, Restolium, and Greg's Landing. Emergency sirens are tested the first Tuesday of the month at 10:00 a.m., and testing was conducted earlier today. Perhaps you heard them. Note, this is the same siren that you will hear when there is a warning for a tornado. The sirens are activated by the Vernon Hills Police Department. Remember, if you hear the sirens at any time other than 10:00 a.m. on the first Tuesday of the month, it means you should immediately seek shelter. Vernon Hills residents should also keep in mind that the Village does not give an all-clear signal. Direction is to monitor media stations or access trusted sources on smartphones to receive updates. As we have recently witnessed severe weather locally here in Illinois, we encourage everyone to visit the Village website to review tips for surviving a tornado. Again, key words to enter in the search bar, tips for surviving a tornado. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, there, the sirens worked well this morning. I know in our house, everybody that lives there has relatively old ears, so sometimes the TV's a bit loud, and in spite of that, we still heard the sirens this morning over the TV set, so they, and I can hear several different ones because I can hear the, the difference in the sound, so we must be pretty well covered.
Well, you, 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 you prompted me, I, I feel obliged to clarify for the community an important message that goes along with that. That, that is more of a happenstance of your particular living circumstance. The, I always look for an opportunity to remind the community that the warning sirens are really designed to alert people that are outdoors in the community to take shelter. They're not engineered to penetrate all of our homes and structures throughout the building, but it's great when it does. I know where, where I live, I can barely hea-, I can barely hear it, and I'm prompted to go stand by the window when I, you know, the best thing you can do at that time is turn on the TV, turn on the radio, check your weather app, do those kind of things, but, but if you're here, if you're hearing them, it means that, and, and it's not the first Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., it means stay away from the windows, don't do what I do, and naturally go out and want to go outside and see how dark the sky is. Please, take shelter, but don't fret if you're not hearing it on test day because it's not designed to penetrate, the, 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 the communities just don't think of it that way. It's really about getting shelter, getting inside from outside, and that's what it's designed for.
No, just an, I was pointing, it's an added benefit, it, we were able to, you know, actually hear it. Comments or questions from the Board? All right, then, hearing none, that's it for tonight, correct? No other new business or communication? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn the Board meeting and go into Committee of the Whole? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Back to you, or to the Mayor, actually. Back to the Mayor.
Mayor Byrne, we're ready to begin the Committee of the Whole, if you are, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to call the Village Board meeting in order. And first item, the minutes from the March 21st, 2023 Board.
Do you do a roll call? Roll call first.
First do a, we'll do a roll call.
Roll call.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here. Would we have to appoint Tom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be the Chairman Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. First item of business is the approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes of March 21st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Or corrections? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second item is the Lauderbach &amp; Amon contract.
Yes, sir. I'll just begin by just providing a quick background on, on how we got to today. For many of you, you know that back in 2018, the Village's Finance Department was undergoing a, a significant transition, and a decision was made to move forward with an operating contract with Lauderbach &amp; Amon, to in effect outsource or contract out the entire finance operation of the Village. We worked under that arrangement for several years, and it, it had some, certainly some pros and, and a few cons. Last year, the Board made the decision to, to move in a different direction and, and to pursue what we've called kind of a hybrid approach, which included having an in-house Finance Director lead the department, but to keep the contracted service options for the day-to-day accounting and, and financial functions. We completed step one of that process earlier this year with the appointment of Director Tom Lyons, and the contract in front of you this evening is our final step. This is a two-year agreement, which in essence is our current agreement minus the services of the Finance Director. So it includes all of the day-to-day accounting functions that are performed by two individuals, your accounts payable, receivable, bank reconciliations, payroll, all of those day-to-day functions. The proposed two-year contract is at a year-one cost of $327,000. With us this evening is Matt Barron from Lauderbach &amp; Amon. Matt is a partner with the firm and, and works with the Village of Vernon Hills account and is available to answer any questions if the Board has any.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
So we're locked in for two years on signing of this contract?
Correct.
Okay. Is it the same cost each year, or is there room for?
After year one, there's a 3% increase.
3%.
And it pretty much, the, the major difference is the in-house Finance Director is appointed, and Lauderbach will still be doing a lot of the, the day-to-day?
Yeah, so currently, right now, we have two day-to-day employees that, that run a lot of the day-to-day accounting functions, which includes our, our payroll and things like that. Those two individuals will stay. Obviously, now we have, Tom is our Finance Director, so those services are no longer part of this agreement. We still get the other advantages of having the, you know, the resources of Lauderbach &amp; Amon as needed and, and other things like that, so.
Okay. Any other?
What was the, before, when we were, LNA was our full-time, what was the, what was the annual fee?
It was $545,000.
$545,000, and you're $327,000 this year?
Yeah.
And how many employees was that? I'm just curious.
That was three employees.
Thank you.
Then is there a, do you want to, so what do you want tonight?
So, we would have a, approval of the contract at the April 18th meeting, so we were just looking for a consensus from the Committee of the Whole to draft the ordinance approving the contract.
Okay. Trustee Schenk? Trustee Takaoka?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Oppenheim? Forster? Okay, I agree. Mayor, they should go ahead with this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then the next item is the 2023 Social Service Grants.
Okay, I'll just give a little program history for the benefit of the community. So th- this program was established back in 2003 as a grant to support local charitable, nonprofit, and civic organizations that provide services directly or indirectly to Vernon Hills residents and the greater Vernon Hills community. Since 2003, the Village has issued over $766,000 in grants to local service groups in, in Vernon Hills. We opened the grant application process for the 2023 grants this past January. In total, we received 15 applications for a grant funding request in the amount of Recently, staff met with Trustees Cook and Forster to review the grant applications for this year, and we've arrived at some recommendations for consideration by the Board. Those are in front of you. Including your board packet was a chart which outlines the 2022 grant awards, the 2023 individual grant requests, and the recommended 2023 grant awards. Overall, we're looking at a recommendation for consideration of $48,500, which would include 13 different nonprofit agencies. At this time, I can turn it over to, to the Committee for Discussion. Trustees Cook and Forster and I, and myself are available if you have any questions regarding these recommendations.
Yeah, the significant addition is the, for, at the bottom, the $4,000 to the Jesse Goldsmith Scholarship Fund. For those who maybe knew, Jesse Goldsmith was a, a Vernon Hills officer who passed a number of years ago, and there's been a scholarship fund in his name for quite a few years now, and the, the original financing tool for that has, has, has gone away, correct? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
So, we're, we were looking to pick that up, and it's a, it's a, an outstanding, outstanding scholarship fund. He was a, a highly regarded police officer with the Department.
I have a question. Yeah. So, is this an arbitrary budget, or is this, I mean, we went from 41.5 to 48.5, or is it just based upon what was requested? How did you determine, you had 67,000 in requests, you came to 48.5?
Well, the 4,000 of the additional seven is?
No, that's fine. I'm fine with that. I'm just, I'm just.
Most of them stayed pretty much the same.
Right.
And, and a couple went up. One that went up was Sue's Pantry.
Right.
We increased that one. We thought that one.
Yeah, for sure, because, see, I would have actually lobbied for even more because the cost of food has gone up, you know, inflation has hit over the last 12 months, and, you know, Sue's Pantry, you know, was, you know, food pantry.
Well, we can.
Driven, and, you know, I think with, you know, the additional, you know, costs of even, you know, soap, laundry detergent that she provides as well, you know, that's gone up significantly. Don't get me wrong, it's, it's nice that we've, we made a, you know, made a nice increase, but I would, I, I want to propose, you know, getting the full amount approved for her, and it, a lot of it has, is driven by, you know, the additional costs of these types of items in general.
So move hers up to?
Five.
Five?
Yep.
Which would increase us to 50, 51,000 then, is that, or no?
Yeah.
Not to mention the amount of people has increased with her, with, you know, with, you know, with the stuff that's been going on worldwide as well. She's picked up more refugees, so to speak, so I would like to ask the Board to, to approve, consider, you know, you know.
What's the Board's pleasure on that?
Where does the budget, where, where does the funding, where do we pull the funding from? So we set the budget?
These are general Village funds, so it's just coming from the general fund. There's a line in the.
This was budgeted to 2023 fiscal year, then?
Correct. Our, our 2020 fiscal year draft budget that we presented a few weeks ago was 44,500. We, we bumped up the additional dollars.
We're already 4,000 over, is what we're saying, roughly.
Correct.
What's next year's, do we, do we have, or is, is this?
This is.
This is 24's fiscal year?
Correct.
Number?
2024, yep.
Were we over the previous year-based budget versus what we actually recommended?
No, so the way we time it is that we can actually put the grant award number in the actual adopted budget, so that's kind of the sequence of how we're doing things right now.
Okay.
So? Can I get support for, for an additional 2,500? I, I understand the budget, but this is, to me, a little different.
Does anybody have, anybody have any objections? No, anybody have any objections to bumping that?
Well, I think we should, are we gonna have, I mean, it's, I know we're, we're not talking about much here, but Tom, do you want to chime in on this? If we had 2,500 to that?